Aaron, go ahead and come on up and take a seat, buddy. You know you're gonna get there. Just go up front.
Chicken.
Settle down.
I brought my helmet today.
So, this first slide really just kinda reminds you all what's well is included in our department. Of course, building permits and inspections, GIS which does the computer mapping for the city, Development Service which basically oversees the development review process and kinda coordinates the whole department, and then planning. And I just wanted to mention, you guys see us in terms of development review. You see us bring zoning cases and a lot of those sorts of things. What you don't see as frequently is the future planning, but that is definitely a role of our department. And we do and can help tie in a lot of the things that you've already been talking about. You know, if you look at our comprehensive plan, it has identified needs for the fire station locations, for example, and so...
Again, because of sprawl.
Exactly. And so, our plans, not only the plans that we have, but the implementation steps that we've been taking over the years to help implement that plan, has helped guide a lot of the decisions over those last few years. So, I wanted to talk about, I know we've talked a little bit here about the comprehensive plan. Why do we do that in the first place? One, as the mayor mentioned, is developing that community vision. That involves all the citizens coming together and telling us where do we want to be in the future for our city. And one of the things we do a little bit differently than some of the other departments is look out farther. We look 10, 20, 30 years out to make sure that the decisions we're making today help us get to that future community that we want to be. It also helps protect property rights. I know we often get flack for our rules and regulations telling people what they can do, but we can't forget that that's helping protect their neighbors from what they might do on their property. Also, quality of life for citizens, that's kind of a self-explanatory one. And then, we've talked a lot today about fiscal issues, and part of the purpose of those plans is to ensure fiscal responsibility. I'll just give you one example. We recently brought you all a review of the street standards. And as part of that, we did an analysis, we just picked a neighborhood, the Bluffs, and we did analysis on those streets. And if those streets had been built to the revised street standards, that would've saved the developer between $2.5 and $3.5 million on the cost of streets, just for the construction of streets. That comes out to between $3,000 and $4,000 per lot within that subdivision. And that would be applicable throughout the community, at least for those areas that are built to our current street standard, or at least the street standard at that time. We also looked at, what does that mean for the seal coat project? And just for the Bluffs, having those narrow street standards would've saved about $150,000 every time we seal coat those streets. And again, you multiply that by every neighborhood in the city. Just a simple decision of how wide we build new streets in the community has a long-term fiscal impact. And it's not just streets, it's all of the decisions we make in terms of future development.
Imagine if way back when, when we made the determination to keep those streets wider, how much it would've saved us way back then?
Absolutely, and...
I mean, that's...
Part of the...
Start with that.
Part of the thing here is, it's gonna be difficult to go back and narrow those streets in those existing neighborhoods, but we can start now and move forward in new development, ensuring that those new developments are happening in a way that at least we are thoughtful about the fiscal impact of those developments. To your point about sprawl, if, you know, the...
And I don't mean that negative when I say the word sprawl, but the larger the footprint, the more expensive the maintenance and cost of infrastructure is. So, sprawl is not a negative, it's just a reality, and it's something we have to deal with.
Right, but it can make an impact on your all's decisions. As an example, if a new development is on, say, half-acre or one-acre lots versus standard single-family lots, the cost for building streets, maintaining streets, water lines, sewer lines, the length of that for each lot is more, and so it costs much more to maintain a neighborhood with one-acre lots than it does neighborhood of, a typical single-family neighborhood of 6,000 to 8,000 square foot lots. So, again, when you approve a large lot development versus a small lot development, you're making fiscal decisions whether you know it or not.
And yet, the further out we tend to go, the more the desire for one-acre lots are. So, that also, in some cases, is part of the strategic plan from a development perspective is...
Absolutely, and if you all think it's worth that extra cost of one-acre lots, then that's a policy decision that you all have to make.
Well, I'm saying that's a developer's perspective. We don't determine how many one-acre lots of a new plot's gonna be. I mean, a guy who buys that land determines what kind of a project he wants out there. That's not our decision, but you're telling us what happens when that happens.
Right, but you do have decisions to make in terms of what infrastructure you require, how those costs are passed on, so that if a developer chooses to develop in a way that's more expensive for the taxpayers, that perhaps some of that cost is borne by them rather than the taxpayers.
That would tie back to...
Go ahead, go ahead, Tony.
That would tie back to your comprehensive plan, too, John.
Yes.
If I hear what you're saying, to have a comprehensive plan that would speak to that very thing, size lots, et cetera, as the town continues to grow, then we are making fiscal decisions, whether we realize we're making fiscal decisions or not.
Inherent, yeah.
Right.
You know, maybe what we need to do is update our comprehensive plan.
I'm gonna shift gears, and we'll come back to that. I've got a slide on that a little bit later on. This is our development review process. Every year, we update you on the, kind of, how we're doing in terms of development review. I'm not gonna read through all of these, I think you've seen them before.
I'll go through them, 'cause this is publicly, so let's go through them.
So, this is our goals that were established, I think, back in 2014, 2015. Reducing review times, providing good information to applicants, good customer service, ensuring that our ordinances and processes are consistent with the goals identified in the comprehensive plan, and then ensuring the consistency in the development review process. And back to the comprehensive plan, I will mention, I know sometimes, you know, we talk about, you know, we pay consultants to adopt a plan, and then it goes on a shelf. I'll say for our part, that's not the case. We've got a whole list of those implementation items from that 2003 plan and the 2009 plan.
The 2009 plan, 'cause that's really the key plan, right?
Well...
I mean, it's not the key plan, but it is an updated plan to the comprehensive plan, even though the comprehensive plan specifically designates key areas of the city, cultural, historic, medical, whatever.
Right.
So, the big picture is that, and then you dive into those sections.
Exactly. And so, even since the 2009 plan, lists of those action items that are recommended in the plan have been done over the last 15, 20 years to help implement the recommendations of that plan. But again, we're getting towards the end of what that plan recommended, and it's probably time to take a fresh look at what, how we should move forward with that.
Let me ask you a question on that, then. Okay, so if it looks on the Vision Plan summary from this 2009, it reads as following. Goal one, increase the permanent residential population of downtown San Angelo. Goal two, improve the pedestrian experience throughout downtown. Three, promote the arts throughout downtown, particularly from local artists. Goal four, enhance the San Angelo's cultural identity throughout the region. Goal five, increase accessibility of public open space in downtown and its role within the city. Goal six, eliminate the negative effects of surface parking in the downtown core. Core seven, increase the role of alternative modes of transportation. Goal eight, increase connectivity between downtown and surrounding neighborhoods. Then we go into neighborhoods. Neighborhoods promote vibrant and viable neighborhoods. And there's lots of items underneath each of these, so there's like eight or nine suggested things to incorporate into that. Improve neighborhood connectivity with and between neighborhoods. Goal three, improve relationship between adjacent commercial and residential land use adjacencies. Goal four, grow new neighborhoods in San Angelo in a reliable, sustainable manner. Goal five, promote neighborhood organization and outreach. Goal six, improve access to open space for all residents. Neighborhood centers. Goal one, contract retail commercial corridors into a series of identifiable nodes or centers at key intersections. Goal two, reorganize parking strategies. Goal three, improve pedestrian access to commercial neighborhood centers. And then, transition areas, revitalize aged commercial corridors. Blend, goal two, blend intensive commercial areas into neighborhoods seamlessly. I mean, these things go on, and I think they're so important as we talk through all of this, because institutional and the public improve their physical relationship between the public institutions and the adjacent context. I mean, there's a whole series of these things, and they have action steps and specific things underneath them. And I wonder if we went through these individually and checked off what we have or haven't done, started or not started, incorporated or not incorporated in it, to how we would grade ourselves.
I think that's a good point. I will point out that a number of those things have been addressed over the years.
Yes, they have.
We've got the downtown plan, we did a Lake Nazworthy plan, we updated the thoroughfare plan, we adopted a bike plan, which is now in the process of being updated. We adopted the sidewalk ordinance, as I mentioned earlier, we proposed some streets width standards. We've adopted multiple zoning, we make changes to the zoning ordinance two or three times every year. You mentioned the parking, we adopted new parking standards a couple of years ago that made it more friendly for developers with reduced parking. So, I think, I feel confident that if we went down that list, we've done a number of those things, but clearly, there's more work to be done.
Well, and I think, you know, I think the issue is, is using this, 'cause it's a really good document, and it really supplements the 2003 comprehensive plan. And just as, I think, on an annual basis, it's important for us to review this vision plan and grade ourselves, number one, but then, number two, realistically decide what can or cannot be addressed on a timely, five-year plan, 10-year plan, whatever. Because the nature of comprehensive plans are as they are, comprehensive, long-term, big-term, and then you narrow it down into specific action plans. And I think the original comprehensive plan that was done is a very good plan in 2003. I think it addressed a lot of issues, but we can't leave it at that. So, we've gotta make sure we've really studied this 2009 vision plan and make sure that we are, particularly where we feel it was good information, we follow those action steps and see if it can't guide us to ensure that we have the quality of life and the future that we want to see for this city and its citizens. I think it's very important. And the things you've already brought up quickly, and there's more that you've done and accomplished, but those were quickly, at the top of your mind as I read through this. But I think it's a great study in what we should be doing.
And again, we'll come back to that in a few slides, but these are just some of the improvements we've made to the development review process. We standardized our submitted requirements, and we simplified some things for the applicants. Increased use of checklists, so that we're ensuring that they're providing what we need, but that they know what we need upfront as well. We revised all of our handouts to make them more user-friendly, based on input we'd receive from applicants. We have the new permit tracking and plan review software that helps us make that process quicker, and we've just implemented a development solution team. That's basically similar to our development review committees, but after a project is already in the process, and they've come across some issue or other, that we can put together a team real quick to help resolve those issues.
That sounds like a great plan. That's great.
As I mentioned, we've got our digital plan review process where folks can upload their projects directly to us. It can be sent out to all the reviewers immediately. In the old days, with paper projects, you know, those were passed around and review took longer. This is just a listing of how many projects have gone through that process just recently. And Fire Prevention will begin using this for their plan reviews in the coming years as well. So, this is our chart that just basically shows how we've been doing in those reducing the timelines. And as you can see, we pretty consistently... Oh, yeah, this thing works. We've kept these numbers pretty low. You may recall from before 2017, those numbers were up to 15 to 18 days on average times for review, so we've got those down. You will notice that last year was a little higher than normal. It's still well within our 21 days for our goal for reviewing projects, but it increased slightly. That's partly because of the number of projects, but also some short staffing, not only in our department, but also Fire Marshal's Office and Engineering, who also review most of these.
Yeah, 'cause you had fewer projects, but doubled the amount of days from one year to the next.
Yeah, we had...
And the highest number of days in a set of five-year window.
Yeah, some of that had to do with some big projects. For example, Shannon is really one project, but it's the equivalent of multiple projects. I will note that, one of the things that's not shown here, when we talk about an average, that means the average project is 12 days. Some are much quicker, but some take longer. And I know many of you all have heard from some of the folks that, for whom it's taken longer. I just wanna note that those tend to be the rare ones that you all end up hearing about, because we process hundreds of permits and plans and projects every week, and it's only the handful that take longer than our normal processes. But again, those are the ones that end up making your phone ring, and we try to work those as best we can. And this is a similar look at residential plans. For example, our goal is for a three-day review. We're at about 4.8 days, or just under five days for reviewing those. Again, I think we're pretty confident that we're close to where we want to be. Part of that is just the volume that we've seen, although, as you'll see in a minute, that volume is decreasing a little bit. Similarly, with planning projects, that our goal to meet the state law is a 30-day review. We've got that under a week, and so we're pretty happy about that. And similarly, with engineering projects reviews, they're well within the 21 days that they, which is our goal for those reviews. And it's really not on this slide, but I'll point out that, as we look to other cities, there was some testimony in the state legislature about some bills that would require reduced review times for things like building permits. And the complaints that were in the testimony before the legislature were talking about, you know, it should take weeks instead of months. Well, we're already at weeks, and our goal is to do it in a number of days. And so, compared to many of the cities around the state, our processes are much quicker than many of them. I mentioned earlier, consultations, those are where we meet with developers in a pre-development meeting before they even come in for an application. You can see that the number of those have increased as we've encouraged projects and applicants to do that. What we find is, folks who come in and meet with us before their project have a much smoother process than folks who just come in and drop off an application, because we are able to sit down with them and help step them through that process and answer some of their questions.
Yeah, I think some of the biggest complaints people have about this is that when they have set up a meeting, for example, that all of the persons that need to be there are not there. And so, they don't get the answers that they need, so there's not, sometimes the ability to get everybody from our planning side, Fire Marshal's side, at that meeting. So, then the next time they meet, different officials are there. They weren't the same officials from the last meeting, so there's contradictions between what was said in the first meeting versus what's said in the second meeting. And I think that's where the biggest complaints come from, is the inconsistency when there's been more than one meeting or missing members of our team at that table.
And that's something we're focusing on right now, is to ensure that if the main decision-maker is not there at the table, that that information gets back to them and we get them. That's one of the things our Development Services staff do, is reach out to those other departments to get those answers. And in fact, for the development review committees, we take notes that are sent to the applicant after the meeting to identify, here's all the things that we told you, here are the outstanding questions that we still need to resolve. And that's partly to help address that concern of consistency, so that we know what we told them in the first meeting, and so that we're not telling them something different the next meeting.
When they leave that first meeting, do they have a written document that describes what was just said and done? 'Cause that's the other thing, 'cause they...
Yeah, not at the meeting, but it comes to them after the fact.
Okay, 'cause they then think that what... And again, I'm saying words for other people, so I might not get it right, but that there's inconsistencies from one meeting to the next, and primarily because some of the individuals that needed to be there weren't there, but then when those individuals are there, there's contradictions between what was said in the first meeting and the second meeting. It's very confusing to people, 'cause it's not what they do.
I guess the thing I would say about that is, similar to the comment I made a minute ago, I don't think that's the, generally, the situation with most of the meetings like that. To be sure, that's probably happened in the past. I would not call it a systemic issue that every time somebody comes in, they get told something different later.
No, I don't think it is systemic.
But I do think that's something we are actively trying to reduce the number of, or the frequency of that.
Good.
This is just one example of an email. We've received a few of these over the last six months, but again, I know you guys get the negative phone calls. You don't necessarily always get the positive ones, but this is from an architect on a project, basically commenting on the professionalism of our staff, returning phone calls very quickly. And so, just wanted to share this one example of a consultant on a project that was very pleased with our process, especially when compared to other cities where they work, saying that our process was better, basically, than those other cities where they work. And they wish that those other cities had our process. So, we like to hear these kinds of compliments to our staff. So, here's just a quick overview of the development activity in the community. These are the number of multifamily developments that we've had. You can see apartments go up and down. Some years, we don't have any. This past year, this current year, we've had 36. We're seeing more duplexes. You know, you can see in 2019 and 20, we saw a lot of them. This year, we've only seen eight so far, but we've gotten more interest in that. You may recall from the housing study that was done, one of the pieces that the housing study identified as missing is what planners call the missing middle. We get a lot of single-family homes, we get a lot of large 200-unit apartment complexes. We don't get those middle range of duplexes, fourplexes, but there's a big market demand for those, and there's a lot of reasons why those aren't being built. But we're starting to see more interest in townhomes, duplexes, and those kinds of apartments.
I think those 13 apartments, that's the project behind where Jim Bass Ford and all that is on that, and those apartments are all right.
Most likely, yeah, they're...
That's income-based apartments.
Right. I think that's those. And we do have some more that don't show up in these numbers that we know are coming as well.
I think their second project is the one out there by Sam's, by Cole's, by the Boulevard Apartments.
Right, yeah. And these are just the number of single-family homes. You can see, we had a big increase there in 2020, over 700 single-family homes, but we're typically pretty consistent at between 250 and 350 homes per year. You can see, this year, we've had 78, which, if that trend continued, puts us on track for 199 for the year. That's a little low, but with the economy the way it is and interest rates, that's not unexpected.
They said it's picking up again, the housing market, so...
So, just lastly here, as a kind of an overview of some of the recent updates and what we've got in progress. I mentioned the downtown historic district that was just approved recently, and you all approved the building codes. Some of the things that we've got in process. You all had that joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and one of the things you talked about was accessory dwelling units. We promised that we would come back with some, an alternative proposal on that. We've been waiting, because there's some bills in the legislature, one of which just got voted down this week.
Very close, missed it by two votes.
That's right.
Almost passed.
So, we didn't want to bring something that would just immediately be overruled by the changes in state law, but that should be coming pretty soon. As was mentioned earlier, we were working on a Parkland dedication ordinance that we'll bring to you all sometime in the near future. I think we've already discussed this with you all, but a sign ordinance, we talked about a sign ordinance committee, got a number of names from many of you, so we've established that committee, and we'll start meeting with them soon. As you may recall, the main reason we're looking at the sign ordinance is some recent Supreme Court decisions that make necessary changes needed for that sign ordinance, and so we're reviewing that, including some folks from some sign companies and other citizens on that committee. We're looking at a landscape ordinance. Over the last few years, we've done some research. We had a preliminary draft a couple of years ago. That's sort of just been waiting for the right time to bring that forward. And similarly, I mentioned the bicycle plan. We've got an update, we've been working on a committee with the MPO, Public Works, Planning, as well as citizens from the bicycling community that have been on this committee looking at the bike plan. And we're very close to having an update to that, that we'll be able to bring forward for adoption.
Well, you know, one of the things that came up last time when we were talking about the bicycle plan were those streets in which we created a bicycle lane, but were streets where the bicycle lane was, but people parked in front of their house, which would be on the bicycle lane. So, we gotta make sure if we adopt a bicycle plan, that we don't create bicycle plans that take away parking in front of the house with that bicycle lane, 'cause that's not gonna work.
And that's something we've looked at. And in fact, you all adopted an ordinance change a couple of years ago that addressed that, but it actually doesn't go into effect until we've adopted the new bicycle plan. And so, as we look at where bike facilities should go, that's definitely something that that committee has looked at in addressing that particular issue. We've got some other minor ordinance cleanups, short-term rentals.
A lot of those have been applied for recently.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of them, and so one of the things that we're looking at is possibly an administrative process where staff could approve those if there's no neighbor opposition, and if there's been no complaints. Right now, you not only have to get approval from the Planning Commission for a short-term rental, you have to renew it every either one or two years. And we also want to look at renewals being administrative by staff, unless there have been complaints or other issues, and that'll help make that process smoother, but also not interfering with the ability of neighbors to complain. So, if there is a neighbor complaint, it would still have to go through a public process.
How does a neighbor know that a piece of, a home is being submitted for a short-term rental?
Similar to a zoning case, we notify all the properties within 200 feet that a short-term rental is being proposed for that location.
How does that differ from Airbnb?
There's no, a short-term rental is an Airbnb, VRBO, any of those. And in fact, Finance Department has recently, or is actually in the middle of an audit, finding short-term rentals that may be out there, you know, advertised on Airbnb that aren't registered with the city, aren't paying hotel tax. And so, as part of that, we're coordinating with them and identifying short-term rentals that are operating but haven't gotten their proper approvals. That's one of the reasons we've seen an uptick in those applications, is because some of those folks have started getting those letters saying, hey, you need to register with the city, and so many of them are coming in to do that. We also want to look at building setbacks and lot coverage. We have some rules that we often get home builders, developers, having issues with the building setbacks. And as we look and compare with the trends around the country, we think ours, our ordinances may be a little stricter than they need to be, and so we want to look at addressing that.
There's the other bill that I think was, I'm not sure the status of it, Bill 1787, maybe, that was of concern relative to building and neighborhoods. Specifically, I'll read it and want to know where we stand on it, 'cause, maybe I can find it, maybe I can't.
Mayor, I think that you may be thinking of the Senate Bill 1787, which I believe was the ADU that was defeated narrowly.
No, the one that was defeated was Bill 1412.
That was the House bill, I think.
Well, that was, well, the Senate Bill 1412.
Okay, okay.
Was defeated by the House by two votes.
Two votes, right.
What hasn't come up is the Senate Bill 1787, I think. Or I've been not notified that it has been voted on.
Yeah, I haven't tracked 1787, yeah.
So, and Drew was gonna alert us of that one, so...
It looks like that bill is relating to the size and density requirements...
It looks like that bill is relating to the size and density requirements for residential lots.
Say that again.
It says relating to the size and density requirements for residential lots. Yeah, let me look at the status.
Is it moving, Teresa?
Yeah, because as of today, I mean, Drew was going to alert me, and he alerted me on the 1412, so I know what happened there. I just haven't heard about this one.
I talked to him earlier in the week, I'm sure, as you did on the 1412, and he didn't bring up 1787 at that point, so...
The last history noted is that on May 23rd, it was placed on the general state calendar, so it hasn't been heard, apparently.
Hasn't even been heard, yeah. And they just have a few days left.
And we're following all of those related bills. The State Planning Association, as well as TML, follow all of those, so we get regular updates. And like I said earlier, that's one of the reasons some of these ordinance changes we're looking at, we're holding off on in case there's a change in state law. And then, so finally, the long-range planning and projects. We talked a couple of times here today about possible update to the city's Comprehensive Plan. We've also recently had some discussions about updating the zoning ordinance. I'll mention that there is a new state grant program that is available for updating the city's plan as well as the zoning ordinance. No matching required, up to $300,000. A couple of issues with it. Number one, in order to get the funds for a zoning ordinance, you have to have a Comprehensive Plan or Land Use Plan that has been updated in the past five years, which ours does not. So we wouldn't qualify for that grant unless we use it to both update the plan as well as the zoning ordinance. The other issue that we have to work out is the timing. If, I won't get into the complicated, but basically you have two years within which to go through the whole process and adopt both the plan and the zoning ordinance. Otherwise, you don't get the money. And so we would want to make sure we have a process identified that could happen through adoption within that two years. Otherwise, we might lose that entire grant allocation.
Well, you know, I've brought it up several times today, but I just want to keep hitting on it. I don't like things sitting on the shelves, and we do a lot of that. This strategic plan from 2009 was really well-done with lots of community input, and I think we owe it to ourselves to go through this and go through the vision plan. Before we look at the city's Comprehensive Plan, make sure that this 2009 update is inclusive. Because it, you don't realize it is when you read the label on the package, but part of it is in here. But this, you know, for me, the issue is, Comprehensive Plans are great. They're meant for big, bold statements, long-term, the future of the city. Sometimes they don't get into specifics enough because they are big, bold, broad, long-term plans. But when we have a update, a vision plan that goes with that Comprehensive Plan, I think we need to make sure we've paid attention and worked hard to adopt, adapt, the vision plan into reality.
Mayor, I would also offer as food for thought for council, we've got more than several areas of town that are in growth mode. We've heard about the north and the east. We've heard about the west, coming southwest, that were probably not really a part of that 2003 or 2009 Vision Plan update. Just as one council member, I would be in favor if you would need to pursue quickly, simultaneously, however you do it, both updating the Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance, just as one council member. And if we had to then task staff to perhaps look at supplementing grant funds to get those done, in my opinion, that's future planning. We're looking at the convergence at some point in time of two interstates intersecting in this community. That area of town out there, if we're, if I am doing my job as a council member, I am thinking longer term about the growth of those areas. For future councils, it's not going to affect this council, really, but to lay some plans in place. So I would be in favor of updating both our Comprehensive Plan and our zoning ordinance.
And I'll just head on to that. You mentioned the cost. I just want to be clear, that $300,000 would probably not cover both a plan and a zoning ordinance, so it would require some commitment of funds on top of that.
And I don't think we'd have to do it all in one budget year either, would we, John? Now, to get the grant, yes, we would, but if the city had to supplement that, we could do that over a couple of budget years. We wouldn't have to do it all in one budget year.
Absolutely. We did a similar process when I was in Abilene, and in fact, we stretched it over three budget years. The process really only took two years, but we stretched it over three so that we could pull funds out of three separate budget years to help spread that cost out. So that's definitely doable.
I'm in favor of, I'll say this to you, Daniel, I'm in favor of pursuing an update to the Comprehensive and the zoning ordinance.
Okay. That's all I had, unless you all have more questions.
Thank you very much.
No, but, Mayor, if you don't want, but when we go down that path, there's certain parts of town that this applies to and certain ones it doesn't. And this goes back to a conversation I had with Michael, Dan, and Rick in 2017 or '18. As you look at some zoning, some of it applies and some of it doesn't. And on the north edge of town, I mean, there are some requirements that come in that sure effect is that are not applicable to what we have, but I just want us to be cognizant of those as we go through. It's not...
All is the same.
...encompass everything. There are different parts of town, and that's what's going to make that probably spread out over budget years, is we'll address this side and that. But I just don't want to see a blanket comes in that somebody's going to have to fall in line with when it doesn't even nearly apply.
Well, you're right, Tom. It's one of the things that we talked about when we started the infill program in the Lakeview area, is that there are certain areas that we need to support an infill program in order to continue to develop them. And they are areas that, quote, can be different income levels, different size of lots level, different pricing of homes. Not all, not all areas, all locations are meant for every citizen. People choose to live and raise a family in some specific areas, and the rules and the flexibility needs to go with those districts or those areas.
Mayor, I do want to point out that there, of course, would be public forums. You'd have town hall meetings. You'd have input from citizens in those areas as well. And we definitely would take all that into consideration as we develop a plan as well. So again, that's a good point, Tom, I hate to admit, but I think that was...
When she went low, Tom's right. I was like, I'm going to talk this.
Well, not everybody gets the same blue ribbon, it goes back to that, okay?
But no, there's a way for us to make sure that all that is accounted for, and of course, have that input as well. So absolutely, y'all are all correct. I mean, it'd be, it'd be great if we actually did come up with a plan that actually helped us to kind of customize to the needs of those areas. So that's exactly what we could get out of this, yeah.
And one of the issues as it relates to Tommy's comment about the interstates coming through here, is that until we have started the planning and engineering of those interstates, we don't have the direct routes that they are going to be taking. So a Comprehensive Plan cannot necessarily incorporate all of that right now, because the planning and the engineering and the buying of property to execute those interstates, we're not at that level. We do believe in this current, as of yesterday, in the current legislative session, in the Transportation Committee, not Commission, that they approved the funding for the planning and engineering of what we call Segment Three of the I-27 corridor. We asked for planning and engineering monies for Segment One, Segment Two, and Segment Three, or the entire segment. We did not have support from our local elected officials for Segment Two or Segment One to do that, but there was support and a vote to come up with the money for the planning and engineering of Segment Three, which is from Sonora to Laredo. That is the most crucial area for the interstate, because it's the most important area is coming out of Laredo, and the most difficult part of building that interstate from a geographical perspective, as well as the conditions of those current roads, will require the most amount of money of the entire interstate corridor. And so that money has been set aside for that Segment Three, or we believe it's being set aside for Segment Three. So part of that, trying to plan around the interstate right now from a conceptual perspective is correct, but even from a logistics perspective, we don't have that route totally worked out as well as a reliever route. We have designated the reliever route in terms of going from point A to point B conceptually, but we've not even laid out exactly that route, so we don't even know which lands will need to be acquired, the angle, the direction, et cetera. So some of that is so preliminary, it would be hard to put into Comprehensive Plan right now, although we know it's coming, but we're not there yet, and none of the planning documents have been created.
Mayor, it could be that not everybody knows. Your role, would you put that hat on and introduce yourself for the...
Well, I am Brenda Gunter. I am the mayor of the City of San Angelo, but I'm the treasurer of the Porch to Plains Committee, but I'm also the I-27 Advisory Committee President or Chairman. And so we presented yesterday to the Transportation Commission, not the committee, the commission, a Porch to Plains strategy behind the I-27 corridor and the importance of it. And we had, we were the only city, the only group, really, that came forward and made some very strong points towards a Transportation Commission on the importance of the I-27 corridor. And so, yes.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.